I now call the December 9th, 2025 Meeting of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education to order. We have J.R.O.T.C. Color Guard from Olympic High School, under the command of Sergeant First Class Retired Trinicia Gani with us today.
Right, face. Present, arms.
I now turn to Board Member Lenora Schiff to introduce our pledge leader for this evening.
Yes, thank you. Amelia Medell. If she isn't down, would she come down? She is an eighth grade student from Eastway Middle School. She will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. I am elated to be introducing Amelia tonight. I have known Amelia since she was a little girl. She grew up across the street in my neighborhood. I watched her as she went to Winget Park Elementary, spent about a year at Southwest Middle School, and now she's at Eastway. She's grown into this young person that she is today, and it's been wonderful to see her. Amelia is a dynamic, smart, creative, and caring student that loves her family, her school, her teachers, her friends, sports, and the creative arts. Let's start with her extracurricular activities. Amelia is on the Eastway volleyball team and serves on the Eastway Student Council. Her hobbies are focused on the arts and nature. She loves to paint, write, listen to music, and travel to the mountains, North Carolina and Tennessee. Her favorite subject is language arts, as she loves to write, especially about the things she reads in class. She has been supported and guided by the entire Eastway team and wants to do a special shout-out, okay, to the following teachers: Mrs. Thompson, Mr. Savoye, Mrs. Wells, and Mr. G.U.G. Amelia's family is here to support her tonight, as well as many members of the Eastway Middle School team. When I call your name, wave like you mean it. Her mama is Leah Biaz. Her dad, Zach Kiegus. Her little brother, Malachi Kiegus. And the principal, Garvin. The assistant principal, Barclay. Teachers, Ms. Wells, and teachers, Mr. Savoye. Thank you to all who are here to support Amelia. Thank you. Amelia, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then share your essay on the topic of justice and fairness?
I pledge allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, march. Left, face. Forward, march. Order, march.
Today I would be talking about justice and fairness, two values that help our community. Justice and fairness are foundations of any strong and respectful community. When we think or talk about justice, we think about making sure that everyone is treated with equality, dignity, and respect, no matter who they are or what they may look like. Fairness means giving people what they deserve and making sure that rules and opportunities apply to everyone in the same way. These values matter because they build trust and respect for one another. When someone knows they'll be treated with courtesy or get recognition from you, they'll feel safe, comfortable, and/or included. For example, during volleyball season, I would get recognition for something I did during the game. I would feel like people were actually watching and cared about my part. Justice reminds us to stand up and speak out to someone who is in the wrong and need to take accountability for their actions that took place. In our daily lives at school, at home, or just in our community, we all have a role in creating justice and fairness. It starts with empathy, accountability, and thoughtfulness. Justice and fairness aren't just ideals or responsibilities, and when we commit to them, we make our community more diverse, balanced, and respected.
Amelia. Yeah, this is in recognition of student pledge leader awarded to Amelia Medez from Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education. Thank you so much.
There being no opposition to any items on the agenda is adopted by unanimous consent. The consent agenda items have been presented in advance. Is there such a motion to approve the items as presented?
Item Chair, move to approve all consent items as presented.
Second.
Moved by Witherspoon, second by Byers Bailey, all those in favor by show of hands. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. And I turn to Dr. Hill for recognition of personnel appointments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we have three personnel appointments. First, we have Dr. Keisha Khan. Dr. Khan has been reassigned to the role of Chief Enterprise Resource Officer. She is currently serving as the Chief Human Resource Officer and has served in multiple roles across our state. Next, we have Ms. Angela Wood. Ms. Angela Wood is our new Chief Human Resource Officer. She has 26 years in education. She is currently serving as the Associate Superintendent of Human Resources and has also served as the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources in Stanley County in multiple roles across our state. And finally, we have Principal Dr. Elizabeth Parsons. Dr. Parsons is the new principal at Old Providence Elementary School. She has 22 years in education and is currently serving as the Assistant Principal at Sharon Elementary School. She's also served at McHugh Road, Kennedy Middle, and other schools across our district. Congratulations to these appointments.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. And now, for while you're all here this evening, the installation of our newest board members. It is my privilege to introduce North Carolina District Court Judge the Honorable Faith Fickling Alvarez, who will administer the oath of office to our newly elected and re-elected board members. Judge Alvarez earned her BA in International Studies from American University. After completing her undergraduate degree, she served in the Peace Corps in Madagascar, East Africa. Upon returning to the United States, she obtained her law degree from Syracuse University College of Law. She then joined Legal Aid of North Carolina, where she represented individuals in poverty law matters until her appointment by the Governor of North Carolina as a District Court Judge in May 2018. She has presided over various courts, but she is currently the lead juvenile court judge. In her role as a juvenile court judge, she hears cases involving youth in delinquency and abuse, neglect, and dependency matters. She has served on numerous committees and boards centered around improving the lives of individuals who live in Charlotte and Mecklenburg County. She has been recognized with various awards because of her work and community engagement. She believes it is a privilege to serve others and has dedicated her career to public service and to ensuring equal access to justice. Judge, please come to the well of the dais for the administration of the oath of office. The oaths will be administered in the following order: Sharlita Hatch, District 1; Shamai Haynes, District 2; Dee Rankin, District 3; myself, District 4; Cynthia Stone, District 5; and Anna London, District 6. After each board member takes the oath of office, we will take a 10-minute recess to reset the dais and allow our newly elected and returning members to make comments. Are we all ready?
Yes.
Ready for what we came for? I just want to say, uh, thank you, Amelia. I don't know where you are, but I love that essay on justice and fairness. That was beautiful, both thought out. All right, um, so Sharlita Hatch and those that will be joining you.
I state your name.
I, Sharlita Hatch.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board.
Of Education.
Of Education.
Do accept said office.
Do accept said office.
And do accordingly hereby.
And do accordingly hereby.
Qualify therefore.
Qualify therefore.
I state your name.
I, Sharlita Hatch.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
So help me God.
So help me God.
District 2, Shamai Haynes.
Can everybody?
I state your name.
I, Shamai Haynes.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board.
Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education. Do accept said office.
Do accept said office.
And do accordingly hereby qualify.
And do accordingly hereby qualify.
Therefore.
Therefore.
I state your name.
I, Shamai Haynes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board. Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, District 3, Dee Rankin.
I state your name.
I, Gregory Dee Rankin.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
Do accept said office.
Do accept said office.
And do accordingly hereby qualify therefore.
And do accordingly.
Hereby.
Hereby.
Qualify therefore.
Qualify therefore.
I state your name.
I, Gregory Dee Rankin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, next will be Stephanie Snead, District Four. I state your name.
I, Stephanie Snead.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
Do accept said office.
Do accept said office.
And do accordingly hereby.
And do accordingly hereby.
Qualify therefore.
Qualify therefore.
I state your name.
I, Stephanie Snead.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. District Five, Cynthia Stone. And raise your right. All right, I state your name.
I, Cynthia Stone.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
As the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
Do accept said office.
Do accept said office.
And do accordingly hereby.
And do accordingly hereby.
Qualify therefore.
Qualify therefore.
I state your name.
I, Cynthia Stone.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
As a newly elected board of education.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. All right, last but not least, District Six, Anna London. Selecting a Bible, raise your right. I state your name.
I, Anna London.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
Do accept said office.
Do accept said office.
And do accordingly hereby.
And do accordingly hereby.
Qualify therefore.
Qualify therefore.
I state your name.
I, Anna London.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
As a member of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, another round of applause for our... If you give us like five minutes, we're going to take a brief recess just to reset the dais. Um, you can get your pictures of our newly installed board members at, at their seats.
...
Board members, if you can take your seats. You got it too.
All right, I'm Lucy, this is you.
She's coming. She's coming down the steps right now.
Thank you for your...
Before we hear from our newly elected, uh, board members, I do want to take a moment to recognize our student advisor, Lucy Silverstein. Oh, okay. Y'all, it made me think I said something wrong. Okay, I want to take a moment to honor her as this is her last meeting with us. Lucy is now a senior at Providence High School, and we've all enjoyed working alongside her. She's been present at all of our board meetings and is always on time. Thank you for using this platform to elevate the student voice. We appreciate you using your board comments each month to share the thoughts and concerns of other CMS students, which serves as a great reminder of why we are all here during this work. When Lucy campaigned last year, she said, "Leadership for me is about collaboration, empathy, and action." And I'm excited to bring those principles into this role. And I think that she's done, has done just that. Thank you, Lucy, for a job well done. We wish you the best of luck as you complete your senior year, and we look forward to seeing you as Wednesday Addams in Providence High School production of the Addams Family this spring. Lucy, at this time, we invite you to share your board report.
Okay, thank you. Um, as Chair Snead said, tonight is my final meeting as the student advisor, and it feels surreal to say that out loud. This role became such a defining part of my life that it's hard to imagine not preparing for these meetings, not gathering student voice, and not sitting at this table month after month. And since this is my one chance with no time limit, I really want to reflect on, on what this experience has meant to me. I want to start with something personal because what happened here didn't just change my schedule, but it changed who I am. When I entered high school, I thought I was just the weird kid. Not smart enough, not impressive. The kind of kid who would blend into the background and hope no one would notice how unsure she felt. I genuinely believed I didn't have much of a voice. But slowly, piece by piece, I found it. Not through one big dramatic moment, through tiny ones. Some were loud and public, like speaking in this room, but so many were quiet, answering Instagram DMs from students terrified about schedule changes, helping them draft emails to their counselors, reminding everybody that nobody is stupid for needing help. I realized that leadership isn't just the spotlight moments. I realized that leadership isn't just the spotlight moments, it's the hidden ones, the moments when you show up for someone who didn't expect you to. Serving in this role didn't just help me find my voice, it sparked my purpose, it deepened my curiosity, and it pushed me to look at systems, equity, fairness, and how decisions impact real people. Sitting at this table opened my eyes to how deeply inequality shapes our world, and because of what I experienced here, I now want to become a humanities lawyer, and I want to work to fix the injustices that hold people back. This isn't just one stepping stone, this experience will stay with me forever. Now, I want to thank the people who helped me grow into someone who could sit here confidently. First, and most importantly, my mom. She absolutely did not sign up for this. She honestly didn't even know I applied to be student advisor until I told her, "Mom, I'm a finalist." And she jumped in fully. She practiced my speeches with me, she calmed me before meetings, supported me when I doubted myself, and cheered me on every single step of the way. She gave up evenings, weekends, and so much time she never planned for because she believed in me, and I wouldn't be who I am without her. To my friends, thank you for grounding me. They often refer to me as the queen of CMS, but, and I will always love them for that, but most importantly, they kept me grounded when everything was overwhelming. And for my best friend, Maddie Cunkel, today after school, she brought me flowers and Starbucks because she wanted to just show how proud, and she knew how emotional today would be for me. That's a gesture I will never forget, and thank you for loving me that well. Mr. Jeter, oh, he's right there. Um, thank you for encouraging me long before I ever even imagined myself in this role. You helped me learn to trust my own voice. Amy Farrell, thank you for guiding me through a very unfamiliar moment, from speaking with elected officials to walking into intimidating rooms and always making sure I feel supported. Sherry, thank you so much for your warmth, your optimism, and for valuing all students' perspectives. I will forever miss our talks about our dogs and how we love to shop at Free People. Kyle, you're up there somewhere. Thank you for your fist bumps, the check-ins, and the laughs that made this room feel very welcoming instead of scary. And board membership, thank you so much for sitting next to me, showing me pictures of your adorable granddaughter and creating moments of connection that meant so much more than you know. And finally, to the students of CMS, all 148,000 of you, thank you for trusting me, for reaching out, for asking questions, for letting me represent you. Everything I said here came from wanting to make your schools better, safer, and more supportive. I care about you all so deeply, and I hope I served you well. Leaving this role is bittersweet, but it's one of the most meaningful experiences of my life. I am so excited for what comes next, starting rehearsals for the Providence High School musical for, in, for The Addams Family where I get to play Wednesday Addams. It feels like the start of a new chapter, even though closing this one is incredibly hard. This role didn't just give me a seat at a table, it gave me a purpose. It changed the path that I see for myself in the future, and I will carry this experience truly for the rest of my life. Thank you for listening, thank you for trusting me, and thank you for letting me grow here.
I will now turn to our newly elected board members to give them the opportunity first to make their board reports and comments for this evening. And first up is District One, Sharlita Hatch.
Thank you, Chair Sneed. Good evening to my fellow board members, Superintendent Hill, CMS staff, families, and everyone who is here with us tonight or watching from home. Standing here as the newly sworn in representative for District One is an honor that I do not take lightly. This moment is meaningful for many ways, but most of all, because it is personal. I'm raising the third generation of CMS students, and that is not a small thing. My parents graduated from West Charlotte and West Mecklenburg. My husband and I both graduated from Vance High School, which is now Julius Chambers, and now my son, and in the future, my daughter, will walk into classrooms shaped by decisions made at this very table. So when I speak about student outcomes, school safety, teacher support, or family engagement, I speak as a board member, but also as a mother who knows exactly what it means to hope, to worry, to advocate, and to believe in the power of public education, and ultimately entrust her babies to CMS every single day. To the voters of District One, thank you for your trust. You did not just elect me, you entrusted me with the hopes for your children, and I will honor that trust with integrity, transparency, commitment, and bold leadership. To my parents, Reverend Melvin and Michelle Crowder, thank you for choosing me, thank you for raising me with the foundation of faith, service, and perseverance. You taught me the value of hard work, of education, and showing up for others. Everything you sealed in me is in present in this moment. To my husband, Mark, you are my partner, my quiet strength, my steady foundation, and my best friend. Thank you for holding me steady. Thank you for walking me from idea to ballot to victory. For every late-night brainstorm, every early-morning meeting, every moment you reminded me that purpose doesn't require perfection, and every time you missed golf for a campaign event. To my son, Mark III, thank you for your big heart and your big questions. You remind me daily why Black boys deserve a school system that protects their joy and honors their brilliance and amplifies their gifts. Always remember, Black boy joy, you will always be a son who is special to me. To my daughter, Amelia, thank you for your sunshine, your hugs, and your fearless belief that I can do anything. You are a reminder that our girls deserve a school system that sees their magic from the very beginning. Always remember, smiley girl, the best in the world, smiley girl, more precious than pearls. To my campaign team, starting with my campaign manager, attorney Lawrence Wooden, Desiree Baker, Anastasia Proctor, Kirsten Hatch, Alexandra Drakeford, Brittany Als, Krista Marshall, Ashley Russ, and Misty Roddy, thank you. There was so much magic making sure we had things in place before we filed, the sprint to our campaign kickoff meeting Thursday at 9:00 PM, and keeping me focused through the noise and distractions, thank you. And to my village of support, the text bankers, the canvas partners, the strategists, the encouragers, the one who fed us, watched the kids, drove across town, corrected misinformation, prayed for us, and refused to let me quit on hard days, thank you. This seat is not mine alone, it is the work of a community that believes this moment is possible, and we did it. Before I talk about vision and action, I want to begin this term with transparency, because families deserve it. Campaigns come with narratives, elections come with opinions, and sometimes rumors follow results. So let me say this clearly. I am here with no hidden agenda, no personal gains, no outside pressure, no loyalty beyond the children and families of Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools. I will be open, I will be accessible, I will be transparent, and I will correct misinformation, not to defend myself, but protect, to protect the integrity of this work. If you have a question, ask. If you have a concern, come. And if you hear something that doesn't sound like my heart or character, I invite you to check the source directly. I cannot ask families to trust if we are not willing to lead with honesty. So, if you know me, I'm a storyteller, and so, a couple of weeks ago, the day before the election, we had a conversation as a family about what would happen if we didn't win. And it was a hard but necessary conversation, because I believe children need to understand that adults aren't perfect. We don't always win, and we have feelings. And so, we talked about that fact, that if we don't win, we will still show up with kindness. We will congratulate the other team, and we will keep fighting for kids, because that work doesn't depend on a title. Just like in soccer, if we don't win the game, we don't quit, we give the other team a high five, and if we feel sad, we know we practiced and left it all on the field. And my son and his brilliance said something like, "So you're saying, we still take the shot, even if we don't know that it's gonna go in?" And I thought, "I'm having a great parenting moment." So, we don't take shots because they are guaranteed, we take them because they are necessary. We lead for children because every fight is easy, not because every fight is easy, but because every child is worth it. That conversation reminded me why I ran, why I studied, why I wrote a dissertation, why I walked neighborhoods, and why I stood in classrooms and communities speaking to teachers and families, because our children are watching how we show up, and we must show them courage in real time. During the campaign, I often return to three words that have become my guiding commitment: log in, level up, lead forward. And those are three simple but powerful commitments. Log in, be present, accessible, informed, and listen deeply to our families and our communities. Level up, do not settle for the status quo, use data, innovation, and courage to raise the bar. Lead forward, make decisions rooted in long-term vision, not short-term convenience. I remain committed to this vision and look forward to shaping it with all of you. To our teachers and staff, I see you, I respect it, respect you, and I am committed to supporting you. To our students, you matter, your experiences matter, your safety, joy, and brilliance matter, and you will always be the center of my decisions. To our families, I will never forget that I am one of you. I know what it feels like to navigate school systems, to wonder if your child is being seen, challenged, or protected, and I will work every day to make CMS a place where families feel valued and heard. Thank you again to the people of District One, to my colleagues on this board, and thank you to CMS for allowing me the privilege of serving the very community that raised me and the one that is now raising my children. Let's log in, level up, and lead forward, together, for every child in Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you. I turn to Board Member Shamadi Haynes, District Two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Education is the very first step to Black liberation. The first person who taught me that was my mom, who's here in the audience today. My thank you is long, because I have a lot of people to thank, but I want you to sit with that statement as I address you today. I want to say thank you to my husband, Michael, and my children. My children are Jamil, Khalil, Desajah, Xavier, and Maia. Of course, I want to say thank you to my mother, Claudia Fatima Peery Smith, her husband, and the only father I've known for the past 20 years, Mr. Clarence Smith. I owe so much gratitude to my campaign team, Samantha Turner, Manny Hagens, Trayvon Edmonds, Georgette Johnson, Earlene Lyd, Alan Williams, Morgan, I'm sorry, I can't remember your last name, honey, but I know who you are, Mr. Sean Mufford, Senior and Junior. I most want to thank Ms. Thelma Byers Bailey. If you know me, you know that I have a very, um, interesting personality, especially when I'm mad, and Ms. Thelma has been a calming voice for me throughout my journey. That journey has spanned over a decade, where I started out as an angry parent, and now here I sit with the ability to be emotion, because I get to represent the district that I have come to love, advocate for, and care for, right alongside Ms. Thelma Byers Bailey. I have had the privilege and the joy to attend so many events with her that I picked up on the fact that her good friends call her Thelma Ann. She allows me to do the same, and such, and that is such a great privilege. But it doesn't end there. I also became the most notorious plus-one, because someone came to this meeting and pointed that out. It has always been a privilege to be her most famous plus-one, and you'll see that she's now my plus-one. I want to thank the voters in District Two and all the volunteers that I did not mention, in case I forgot someone. I am pretty emotional tonight, which is, is hard to get to that with me. I want to call out that there is someone here who has made a very impactful, um, has been very impactful to me. Her name is Dr. Saritha Sherrill, and in those moments when I was an angry parent, she let me know that I didn't have the right to be angry, because I wasn't informed enough. She took me to the Black Political Caucus, she took me to the county convention, she took me to the places that she felt that I would succeed in the advocacy work that I would do. I want to be clear about one thing, I never wanted to run for political office, but even back then, I think she secretly saw something in me, and she kept pushing me in these spaces. I'm eternally grateful for her, and I hope she's, um, watching online. Endorsements don't mean everything, but they are important. I want to mention the Black Political Caucus, an organization that I've been in for a very long time. We have always, um, we haven't always agreed on everything, but what we agree on is that the fate of Black children rests in education. The Charlotte Mecklenburg Association of Educators, my neighborhood association, who also pushed me forward and held things down while I was running. The Charlotte Alliance of Black Accountants, I want to thank. I want to say something to my fellow board members. I'm coming to this space, and at different points and times in my advocacy, we may have not always seen things from eye, seen things eye to eye. So I think it's important to say that if we keep the number-one, number-one, which is the success of children in CMS, and hopefully, parents will be satisfied with the work that we do, we will always be solid partners. I want to say to what I'm calling the Fab Five Plus-One, you've been remarkable people to run with, I have had the privilege of getting to know you, and I think our service together will be just an extension of that. Thank you for allowing me to partner with you. I want to tell parents, that parents, you are my why. You are the reason why I came into this work. If the school that we were sending our children to had just let me do the little things that I was trying to do, it wouldn't have been this, I'm telling y'all. I'm grateful for every experience, and I want to tell you that my mother taught me something. She said, "Never just think about yourself, always think about the people around you and the impacts that you can have, and the impacts that people have on you." I got into this work because I saw where the greatest form of inequity in CMS at that time was parents being able to educate, being able to be involved with their children. That march has, has allowed me to do all of these things, and I thought it was important to say, "Parents, you are special, and you deserve the very best. I hope I give you my very best." I want to say that students, I owe you everything. As a parent, I know how hard it is for students in this day and time. You have so many struggles, so many things, so many marks you have to meet, and I hope to also partner with you. I hope that you will know my passion, my heart, my soul goes into complete, having children have a solid education. I'll end with this, my campaign slogan, which I can't remember, never mind, I'll end with this. I am because we are, and because we are, I am. I will not tolerate anything that holds me down. I'm grateful for the support, thank you so much, and that ends my report, and I'll conclude with you, Madam Chair.
I turn to Board Member Cynthia Stone from District Five.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on this special occasion. To begin, I would like to express my gratitude to the campaign team that worked so hard to put me in this seat. Jeremy Golden, Nick Perez, Heather Ruckerstall, Rachel Stone, and Janelle Travis, not in the order of importance, but alphabetically. Putting the right people in the right place at the right time is always essential to its success, and these people were certainly the right people in the right place at the right time. I especially want to thank my husband, who listened to me, kept groceries in the house, and provided continuous encouragement when my energy and excitement faltered. You had more faith in me than I had. Thanks to the students that supported me, represented tonight by Cecilia Call, Conley and Anna Baxter, who are not able to attend tonight, and of course, Nick Perez. You are all such impressive people, and I am so glad, so glad, that you are involved in all kinds of causes, not only supporting my campaign. not only supporting my campaign. Encouragement by young people or engagement by young people is critical to the continuation of our society. Thank you to my special supporters and friends, my church family represented by one of my pastors, Amy Dean. And I must recognize and publicly thank my cohort of teachers from my many years in CMS because you gave me the impetus to run and take on this role. Thank you. My friends, your support throughout most of my adult life has never wavered, and all of you continue to inspire me, encourage me, and share the music of my life. To all classroom teachers, I honor you. I appreciate your faith in me. There is a bond between us, between all of us. If you remain primarily in the classroom, there is a commonality among us that is unique. Our subgroups, elementary, middle, or high school, are very different realities. But there are some things that are similar, how we relate to our students, celebrating their successes and hoping their failures or mistakes will be of the kind that teach important lessons and hoping that they will teach the important lessons instead of mistakes that can ruin or even take their lives. How we work to engage families in the lives of our students and how we engage the lives of the families, how much we care about the work, although often thankless and as difficult as it is. Thank you. I am truly grateful and truly humbled by your support. Thank you to all the parents, families, and voters of District Five who have put their faith in me. I'll work hard, and I invite you all to join with me as we work to support our students, your children, and have, and hope that they have the quality educational experience they require and deserve. The educational experience that provides varied opportunities to discover their individual interests and talents, be it artistically, technically, academically, athletically, or socially, that will serve them well as they grow to lead us in the future. I am excited to join this board and staff. They have demonstrated their commitment to the students and families of Charlotte Mecklenburg for so long. While rightfully pleased with the growth numbers, they all appreciate and are dedicated to face the challenges they know still remain and, of course, manage through the uncertainty of these times. I am excited to work with all of you. My commitment to you is that I will always listen to you. I will research your questions and help you engage with those who can provide support or responses to your questions, concerns, and suggestions. I will keep you updated on board District Five happenings. I will always focus on continuous efforts to improve student achievement. I commit to you, I will serve with personal integrity, systemic integrity, and with an outcome-focused mindset. In short, I will show up and do the job of a board member to my very best ability. Together, CMS boards, staff, and families, we will work together to ensure our schools are safe for students and staff. We will work together to ensure our student mental health issues are addressed early and effectively. We will work together to ensure our teachers are treated respectfully and recognized for their ability and talent to do their jobs. We will work together to ensure equity and accessibility to the quality education experience offered to all of our students. We will work together for the better future for our kids, our community, and our world. Thank you.
Anna London, District Six.
Thank you. So, good evening. It is an honor to sit here tonight as the newly-elected board member for District Six. This is a true full-circle moment for me. Though I have never done this job before, and I have a lot to learn, I'm committed to learning as quickly as possible, and I'm committed to serving you all well. My why has always been about people, our children, our families, our educators and staff, and the community that holds all of us together. I believe every single student deserves opportunity and a clear path toward a meaningful life. Long before I ever imagined serving on this board, I was an educator. And then I was a counselor for youth and families. And now, in workforce development, I see clearly what our region needs, not just graduates, but young people truly prepared to thrive. That is the heart of my work. I believe in strong schools, clear pathways, and a community that refuses to let any child slip through the cracks. If it doesn't move student outcomes in some way, it's noise, not strategy. Tonight, I want to honor the people who brought me to this moment, to the incredible community of District Six. Thank you. Thank you for your support, for trusting me with your students and with your schools, and for believing in the vision that we share together. I will work every single day to honor the trust that you placed in me. I ask that you hold me accountable, communicate with me, ask me the tough questions, and keep showing up. To my niece, Autumn May, who could not handle the rest of this evening because two and a half is really hard, you are one of the biggest reasons that I show up with so much heart. I want every single student to feel as seen, supported, and as full of possibility as I want you to feel. You are my motivation, my why, and my heart. To my parents, my dad, and my stepmom, thank you for nurturing the bold and courageous parts of me, even when it kept you on your toes. You poured into me the confidence to speak up, to stand firm, and to walk with purpose. And tonight, I get to sit here and say that it's paying off. To my siblings, my brothers, my sister, Adriana and Angela, who is here, you are special to me in ways that I can never fully express. You remind me why I fight so hard for kids, for opportunity, for strong futures. And thank you for being the support system that keeps me grounded, keeps me steady, and loved. To my friends, my campaign team, my volunteers, thank you for early morning and late-night strategy sessions, and to the countless hours that you poured into bringing the vision to life. Thank you for your honesty, your expertise, your fierce commitment to doing this work the right way. Thank you for the prayers, the campaign contributions. You showed up when it was inconvenient. You showed up when it was uncomfortable, when it was raining, hot, cold. And you reminded me daily, well, let's be honest, probably hourly, why I stepped into this arena in the first place. Thank you for pulling up when it mattered the most. To my Charlotte Works team and board, thank you so much for the work that we, for working alongside me and the work that we get to do every single day to strengthen upward mobility in this community. You've shaped my leadership, and I bring everything that I've learned into this seat. To the outgoing board member, Summer Nunn, thank you for your service, your commitment, and your support. Your leadership has made a lasting impact, and I am grateful for the example that you set. To every single organization, community group, person, and leader who endorsed me, thank you. You didn't just lend your name. You lent your trust and your credibility. I will honor your endorsement and your support with my service, my integrity, and the way I serve. I am so grateful for Dr. Hill, the cabinet, the team, the leadership team, every single educator and staff person who makes CMS run all day, every day. You all lead with clarity and an unwavering belief in what's possible for students. To my fellow board members, thank you for the way that you lead and the way that you serve, and I look forward to working alongside each one of you. I want to make a simple promise to this community. That's everyone in this room, educators, staff, students, parents, caretakers, community members. I am committed to governing with clarity, care, and an unwavering focus on what matters most, our students. When we keep student outcomes at the center, our decisions become more thoughtful, our priorities more honest, and the work feels grounded in purpose and core mission. Before I close, I want to ground us in this truth. We don't need to do anybody else's job. We just need to do ours, and we need to do it really well. Our job is to make decisions that move students forward academically, emotionally, and in their readiness for life. Thank you again, and I am so honored and humbled to serve.
I turn to Vice Chair Dee Rankin, District Three.
I will be brief. No written speech this year. Try not to cry like I did last time. First, I want to say thank you to all my family that's here, my mom, my dad, my wife, my sister Jill, affectionately known to everybody as Aunt Jill, everywhere she goes. My brother-in-law Alex, and my daughters, Imani, Neif, and Jada, my aunts, my cousins, my family. They're friends, but they're not considered family. Thank y'all. I appreciate y'all for being here. Thank you to the brothers of Phi Beta Sigma Incorporated. Thank you. Go Mob. Thank you to the Black Political Caucus of Charlotte Mecklenburg. Thank you to the Queen City Chapter of North Carolina A&amp;T Alumni Chapter, Aggie Pride. I'm not here by my, I'm just, there's so many people I can thank, but I appreciate you. I wouldn't be who I am if it weren't for everybody I just named. I pray that my ancestors look down and are proud of me. Hope I'm making them proud. I just, I'm about to work. I love our kids. I'm just a kid from the west side of Charlotte, just trying to do the right thing. And hopefully, when students leave this district, they have the mindset of that great philosopher named Q-Tip from the tribe called Quest. If knowledge is the key, just show me the lock. So hopefully, that we're pouring into our kids so they have that confidence that says, man, when they look, when I left Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools, I had all the knowledge, the intelligence, the confidence to open any door that I can. So I just want to say, lastly, thank you to the members of District Three, the over 18,000 individuals that believed in me. Thank you for your continued support. Thank you for my board members here. I can't, I'm excited to do the work with you guys. I'm looking forward to it. So, thank you.
All right. First, let me begin with gratitude. Thank you to my family, my friends, my colleagues, and to this community for trusting me once again to serve on the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education. Being sworn in for a second term is not some, is something that I do not take lightly. It is a responsibility that sits on my shoulders, and if you know me, it's all in my spirit. I do want to take a moment to, I hate going through names because I know I'm gonna forget some people, but I will give it a try. I first will start with my husband, Keithan, who has provides an unwavering strength and support and patience with me as I'm able to execute the duties of being on this board and being committed to you as a community. I thank Essence and Jayden for sacrificing me as their parent. I thank my mother for giving me this fiery spirit and the support that I've all, the support that has gotten me here today. I thank my father-in-law, Larry Brown, my mother-in-law, and really, I should say, father and mother in love, Larry and Barbara Brown, and my brother-in-law, Brandon Brown, as well. I want to thank Rocky McGregor for being fiercely and unapologetically supporting students and in that mission, supporting me. I want to thank Mark Jarrell because I wouldn't be sitting here without Mark Jarrell. He's given me all of the advice and guidance and, and support that one could ever want. Sarah Jarrell for being a surrogate that, when my mother is not here, that she always provides that support as well. I want to thank Reverend Enrico Wright for giving me that spiritual grounding. He had the whole church pray over me before I literally, the entire congregation, put their hands out for me as I continued on this journey. The rest of the names, you know, you have had a role in supporting me, whether it is a word of encouragement, listening to me fuss, a volunteering at the polls, becoming a new family member, even though you're somebody else's family member. Dee's sister is now my sister, has supported me as well. But just through the names. I wouldn't be sitting here without Smudgy Mitchell. I just happened to have a chance encounter with him in a restaurant, and he put me on the journey to run. I want to thank Justin Harlow, Yvette Townsend Ingram, the Black Political Caucus, Bobby Drakeford, Jocelyn Nolly, Kim Webb, Gina Moon, African-American Caucus, Braxton B. Coles, S.Y. Mason, the fierce work of the League of Women Voters, Laura Cooper, Tamisha Hughes, Andrea Jasper, Darryl Bonaparte, Curtis Hayes, Jackie Walton, Collette Forrest, Angela Ambrose, Wilhelmina Rember, Humor Call, Malcolm Coley, and Barbara Ratliff. I'm forgetting names, but you know, you know who you are, and you know what you've meant. But I cannot go without mentioning those that have paved the way, Sarah Stevenson, Alma Adams, Ella Scarborough, Vernita Mitchell. Those are the names, just a few. As you can see, I tried to have as many of my village that I could, as possible, to stand with me at the day. For one, it started just lightly because I wanted to beat the number of people that Dee Rankin had last when he got sworn in. So that was like a competition for me that I wanted to have more people, and I think I won. So, but, I don't take it lightly because when I called all those people, they were honored to stand with me. And so, and I was surprised, really, to see that they took the time out to show up. So I'm always surprised by their support. But I do just want to say a few words. Over this past three years, we faced challenges on every level, federal, state, and local. Policies, politics, and pressures have created real obstacles for our schools, and our children feel it. Too many young people are carrying a heaviness that they did not create. Too many are losing hope before they even had a chance to see what's possible. When our state fails to fully fund education and when federal decisions shake the ground under our families, it shows up in our classrooms, in our attendance, in our mental health needs, in our students' sense of future, students' sense of what the future holds. That is why I've always stood in a gap and why I continue standing in the gap for students who need someone to fight for their future, standing in a gap for teachers who deserve real investment, and standing in a gap for those that simply believe that we must move with the fierce urgency of now for our students. Standing in a gap for families who deserve stability, safety, and opportunity. If I don't stand there, if we don't stand there, those gaps become caverns, and our children fall through them. But let me be clear. Even in the midst of these challenges, hope is not lost. We have seen historic gains in CMS. We have seen schools grow, educators rise, and communities refuse to give up on their children. We've seen students, brilliant, resilient students, achieve more than what the headlines would have, would ever tell you. And I believe that for the next four years, they can be our strongest yet. This second term is about building on progress, expanding possibility, and restoring hope where it's been shaken. It is about making every child in every zip code make sure they have a path to be enrolled, enlisted, or employed. It's about ensuring our schools or places where students feel safe, seen, supported, and uplifted. I stand, I am here tonight as someone who loves this community too much to be silent and is too committed to our children to step aside. I'm still standing, I'm still serving, and I'm still fighting. And yes, I am still happy to be here because CMS, it is the greatest privilege that I've had to serve, for me to serve CMS. Thank you for the privilege of serving a second term. But I do have something for our new board members on each side. If you can just look under your seats.
Hey, Oprah.
Like on the side. Y'all don't see those seat belts?
I'm looking for a car.
With your seat belts on, it's gonna be a bumpy ride. It's gonna be an excited one, but one that you will have so much pleasure at the end of, at the end of your journey. So with that being said, I turn to my other school, school board members for their board comments this evening. I will turn to Board Member Ship. I don't know if you had a report this evening.
Right. So much has been said, and it's been beautiful to hear from each and every one of you tonight. With much gratitude, I am excited to continue this work, this important, critical work on behalf of our children in Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools. As I move into maybe 40 years of doing this work, over 40 years, and I'm still excited, I still know we must do everything that's possible to ensure every child has endless possibilities. I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you. Welcome to the board, welcome to the ride. If not us, then who at this time? And this work is bigger than me, is bigger than you, but it will take each and every one of us to stay strong, to stand together, to ensure every child in every classroom know that they're gonna have the fruits of our labor to make it in this world today. And the fight and the struggle is real, and I'm excited. So I'm, and they know I can talk, so I'm gonna stop right here and just say, thank you, thank you. I'm always excited. It's been a journey and a season for me this year. I'm a new grandmother, I have to say that one, and they're in Virginia. So I've been committed to do this work because it's so critically important, and I'm looking forward to each one of you joining this work. And as Board Chair Snead has said, buckle up. We have some work to do. And I want to continue to thank Dr. Hill for all she's done. This journey has been good. Thank you.
I'll be very brief, because I think everything is, that needs to be said, has been said. Want to, it's always a pleasure for board members who I've had the pleasure to work with thus far. No question their commitment to students and to those of you coming on. Looking forward to it. And I think Ms. A. said it best, you know, just keep the main thing the main thing and focus on what's important, and we can see, continue to see, produce the outcomes and to provide futures for our students. Thank you, Dr. Hill. And I'd just like to take a minute also to honor matriarch in our community who served a long time, Ms. Bayes Bailey.
Superintendent Hill, I symbolically turn over the gavel to you, who will lead the board in the election of the next chairperson.
Thank you. The election of the chairperson of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education will proceed according to the following procedure. I will open the floor for nominations. Please raise your hand if you'd like to nominate someone. Nominations do not, or until a motion passes to close the nominations. After the nominations are closed, if more than one board member is nominated, voting will occur in the order that each board member was nominated. The first person who receives the majority of the votes of the board members present will be elected as the new chair and will assume office immediately. The floor is now open for nominations for Chair of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
I'm honored to nominate Ms. Stephanie Snead.
Board member Stephanie Snead has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? All board members had an opportunity to place a name and nomination. Is there a motion and a second to close the nominations?
Second. I move.
Moved by Board Member Dee Rankin and second by Board Member Monty Witherspoon. All in favor of the motion to close the nominations for Board Chair, please indicate by raising your hand and keep it raised until the vote has been counted. That motion passes unanimously. I now declare the nominations closed. We are now ready for the election. All in favor, all in favor of Stephanie Snead for Chair of the Board of Education, please indicate by raising your hand and keep it raised until the vote has been counted. There being unanimous votes for the, for Board Member Stephanie Snead, the voting is closed, and I declare Stephanie Snead has been elected Chair of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education. Congratulations, and I turn the gravel over to her.
You did have a gavel.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you, board members. I do not take it lightly that you have shown your vote of confidence in me for another year to serve as the Chair of the Board of Education. And thank you Superintendent Hill for running this process. The process for electing the Board's Vice Chair is as follows. I will open the floor for nominations. Please raise your hand if you'd like to nominate someone. Nominations do not require a second. The nominations will proceed until every board member has a chance to nominate someone or until a motion passes to close the nominations. After the nominations are closed, if more than one board member is nominated, voting will occur in the order that each board member has, has been nominated. The first person who receives the majority of the votes of board members present will be elected as the new Vice Chair and will assume office immediately. The floor is now open for nominations for Vice Chair of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Board of Education.
I nominate Dee Rankin for Vice Chair.
Gregory Dee Rankin has been nominated. Are there any other nominations?
Move that we close on the second name.
All board members have had an opportunity to place a name and nomination, and there's a motion on the floor to close the nominations. Is there a second?
A second.
It has been seconded by Board Member Ship. All those in favor for closing the nominations, please do so by show of hands. Madam Clerk is unanimous. I now declare the nominations closed. We are now ready for the elections. All those in favor of Dee Rankin for Vice Chair of the Board of Education, please indicate by raising your hand. It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Congratulations, Dee Rankin, you have been duly elected as Vice Chair of this organization. All right. Now, this is the part that little children like Jaden and Essence can go home and do your homework, because we will now be going to public comments, and we'll be going to the rest of our regularly scheduled agenda items. So first up is public engagement. There are three public hearings this evening, and the rules are, only speakers who have timely signed up for these public hearings are eligible to speak. Speakers are not permitted to read statements or speak on behalf of someone else. Each speaker will be called to speak one at a time. Each speaker will have a maximum two minutes to address the board. Each speaker may only talk about the topic that is the subject of the public hearing. Individual student matters or specific personnel matters may not be discussed since these matters are confidential and not appropriate for a public hearing. Speakers are welcome to offer comments or criticisms, but should refrain from personal attacks, accusations, threats, and insults. Speakers should also refrain from identifying students or staff by name or providing personal addresses, emails, or any other identifying information. Profanity or other inappropriate language will not be allowed. The Board reserves the right to cut off any speaker who violates these rules. The first public hearing this evening is modifications to Policy B-BPP and Exhibit B-BPP slash E, Board Policy Process. As I call your name, please come to the podium and speak in the order that you called. The only name this evening is Dr. Sheray Smith.
Good evening, Board Chair and Assistant Chair, the entire Board, Secretary, and the 144,000 students in Mecklenburg County Schools, the 18,000 teachers, educators, and those persons that are able to partake in the instruction of students. I am Dr. Sheray Smith, and I am here to speak on the Board Policy BBP regarding the process of the Board creating policies. And I wanted to share this based on experiences, that although this policy does strictly align with how the Board determines rules and regulations for submitting new and amended policies, the policies regarding to house, I know that we have new elected, I mean newly hired HR staff, but I have heard many concerns with the constituents regarding submitting applications and not being able to receive feedback from those applications regarding whether they were entertained, hired, or even if they were just no longer considered. So I would ask the Board that as you determine your policies and how those processes are implemented, that there's either, even if a candidate is not considered for a job or vacancy, I do know that some of these candidates are attending the substitute training that is held virtually, and may have to contact those individual schools, but I do ask that we can consider making sure all candidates, when they apply for jobs, that they receive some type of feedback.
Thank you. That being the only speaker this evening, I now declare this public hearing closed. The next public hearing is for modifications to Policy B-POL, Political Activity. We have two speakers this evening, Dr. Sheray Smith and Kyle Queen.
And in regards to this policy, B-POL, eliminating the elected, activity of elected officials as campaigning on the site, I wanted to ask the Board to consider those rules and regulations. I understand that it states in that policy that no activity may be conducted, and I think during school hours, and I think that's phenomenal. However, I do think that for your civic engagement clubs, your students that may be looking at political careers and things like that, that they be partnered with mentors and use persons that have been elected or previously elected as guest speakers and things like that, so that we won't get away from just not exposing our students to politics early on.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Queen, and I am speaking tonight as Coordinator for Public School Strong. We are in favor of removing political campaigning from the school day. However, the limitation of no school visits for board members for an entire year spans half of an elected term. Social media photo ops for campaign purposes aren't fair to non-incumbents, and I imagine they can be disruptive to schools, even as the recognition received by students and staff is positive. On the other hand, I personally have appreciated newsletters from board members that describe their experiences within schools. This is because we believe it is good to have board members inside schools in their districts. Governance from lived experience is better than governance from theory. So we propose the intended outcome could be achieved by just prohibiting photography. Thank you.
Thank you. I now declare this public hearing closed. The last public hearing for this evening is modifications to Exhibit S-COMM slash E, Community Participation and Vetting and Approval. Dr. Sheray Smith.
Yes, Madam Chair. And so I rise for this last agenda item for C, in reference to community increase and support. I, myself, and your outgoing board member, Madam Bailey, and I were with Ascend nonprofit organization when we sat there in a room of more than 100 early childhood providers, and a lot of them were hungry for opportunities to partner with the Mecklenburg County School District, specifically with your students that were getting suspended from classrooms, so that they have a program to go to outside of the school instead of sitting at home, most of the time unattended, which leads to crime in our neighborhoods and other high-risk activities. And so what we're saying now is that if there's a way, whenever you do do your bidding and you're involving community agencies, if you can make that extremely public, so that those agencies and nonprofits that would like to partner you would have an opportunity, of course, according to your vetting and your rules. Thank you.
Thank you. I now declare this public hearing closed. I now will provide the rules for public comment. Only speakers who have timely signed up for public comment are eligible to speak. Speakers are not permitted to read statements or speak on behalf of someone else. Responses to questions or engagement between speakers and the Board or individual Board members does not take place during this period. Each speaker will speak, will be called to speak one at a time. Each speaker will have a maximum of two minutes to address the Board. Each speaker may only speak on the topic, they may speak on the topic of their choice, except individual student or personnel matters, since these matters are confidential and not appropriate for public comment. For these matters, the Board encourages you to contact the appropriate department, staff member, or Board Office. Speakers are encouraged to share comments or criticisms, but should avoid personal attacks, accusations, threats, and insults. They should also refrain from revealing students or staff's names or sharing personal addresses, emails, or any other ident, personally identifying information. Profanity or other inappropriate language will not be allowed. The Board reserves the right to cut off any speaker who violates any of these rules. As I call your name, please come to either podium. Please speak in the order that you are called.
Hi, I'm Ella Shaler, and I'm here today with a group of students, Violet, Charlotte, Wortham, and Bubby. We're a group of 11th graders at Myers Park High School in a club called Community Problem Solvers. This year, we have decided to take on the challenge of teen sleep deprivation and how we can solve it in our lives. Our mission is to incorporate later start times for CMS high schools, either by pushing the start times back or swapping start times with feeder schools. In recent years, high schoolers have not been able to achieve eight to 10 hours of sleep, which is the recommended amount suggested by sleep specialists. According to the National Sleep Foundation, eight out of 10 American teens are sleep deprived and struggle to achieve quality sleep. Because of how many teenagers are affected with lack of sleep, it stood out to us as an important problem to take on and ultimately solve as we are directly affected by it. Research indicates that starting school after 8:00 a.m. results in students getting 30 to 50 additional minutes of sleep per night without extending the school day. Additionally, data suggests that later school start times boost student attendance grades and overall class engagement.
Thank you. Is it Amrita? Is Amrita here? Wortham Conne and Bubby Hall?
Teen sleep is important because it impacts performance in school and other developmental activities, along with overall energy throughout the day. Teenagers are naturally wired to stay up later due to their natural evolution and not because of bad habits. In ancient tribes, teenagers were the protectors at night, and this led to the evolution of teen circadian rhythm, which designs them to fall asleep later than children and adults. Changing school start times impacts more than one may think. Numerous studies show that mental health, scholarly performance, athletic performance, and car crash statistics can all be improved with a later start time. Research indicates that the classes earlier in the day perform worse than the later classes and have lower attendance rates. For example, when we surveyed teachers at Myers Park, data from one IB history class identified that the first-period class average was seven points below the later class periods of the same level. Secondly, a study conducted by the National Library of Medicine on teens in Kentucky shows that after pushing school start times back by one hour, the average crash rate for teen drivers in the study decreased by 16.5%, whereas teen crash rates for the rest of the state without the delayed start time increased by 7.8% over the same time period. This shows that there is a direct correlation between road safety and school start times.
Mr. Hall?
Is it Bubby?
Yes, my son. Are you Mr. Hall?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
The American Academy of Pediatrics issued a policy stating that start times for middle and high schools, students- students shouldn't be before 8:30 a.m. Multiple studies link anxiety and mood disorders to insufficient sleep in teens, and later school start times will overall increase the health of teenagers' mental health. National Public Radio reports that when schools in Seattle shifted start times an hour later, students on average got 34 more minutes of sleep. This boosted their nightly sleep from six hours and 50 minutes to seven hours and 24 minutes. When students received closer to eight hours of sleep, they reported better mood stability, lower stress levels, and a noticeable drop in anxiety. By prioritizing sleep, we can prioritize students' well-being and overall mental health. Along with these national studies and data points that we have collected, we have identified seven local sleep specialists that have signed on and lent their support to our campaign. One of those sleep specialists, Dr. Meredith Snap, noted that she had kids move from the district because their early school start time was so disruptive to their well-being. We are happy to provide those signatures with their comments upon request.
Thank you. Charlotte Marston?
We understand that changing the start times is far from easy, but we have carefully considered many of these challenges and possible solutions to these challenges. The largest barrier to this change is often bus schedules and transportation. We propose switching start times of high schools and middle schools. For example, Myers Park High School starts at 7:15 a.m., and feeder middle schools start at 8:30, meaning we could swap the school's start times, and it wouldn't require a change other than switching the time they run. We know this has been considered before, but AI tools are making logistical challenges like this easier. Another challenge is after-school activities and practices would run later, and we understand that. As previously mentioned, our body's circadian rhythm is designed to go to sleep later, allowing more time for homework, dinner, bedtime routines, et cetera. A third challenge is some parents will object to the later times. Many parents already also object to the current schedule, though. Doing what's right for the student should come first. We would love to discuss some of these challenges with you that we have encountered while working on these school start times, and would love to meet with you to discuss possible next steps in the solution. To get in touch with us, please reference the emails we used to sign up for this meeting.
Thank you. Violet Salome?
The Mission of the School Board says that the goal is to create an innovative, inclusive, student-centered environment that supports the development of independent learners. They also state that their vision is to help all students reach their full potential. As students, we require the help of adults in our lives to support our learning, health, and safety. While we want to assist with the problem as much as we can, it is the responsibility of the adults in this room to ultimately do what is right for students' health. If the goal is truly to help each student reach their full potential, then we must recognize the overwhelming research showing that later start times improve academic performance, mental health, and overall well-being. Doing what is right for students means taking action, and that action starts with changing school start times to better align with the needs and realities of the students you serve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is Diamond Isley here? Followed by Elizabeth Cheatham. You can come on down. If you can just walk down a little.
My name is Diamond Isley. I am the mother of a CMS student who is on an IEP and also takes daily medication at Quails Hollow Middle School. I am here tonight because my son has experienced a pattern of troubling incidents, inconsistent discipline, and actions that has been taken without my knowledge. These events have now caused anxiety, and he often does not want to go to school. He feels unsafe, publicly humiliated by adults who are supposed to be protecting him. Students, faculty members are verbally, physically, mentally, and emotionally bullying him, harassing, and discriminating against him. October 15th, I was told by a teacher that my son was talking and playing in the cafeteria and was blamed and punished for damaging the cafeteria equipment, and later was found out that it wasn't him. October 22nd, my son asked to go to the restroom and was later denied. Once he was denied, I got an email from the teacher that stated my son was a liar. This language is unprofessional and unacceptable. On October 28th, during an IEP meeting, these concerns was brought up to Dr. Spalding, which is the principal, and he stated that he had no knowledge of these events that were previously discussed and the conflicting information about Jason's behavior and bathroom use. This shows a breakdown of communication and inaccurate reporting. November 14th, a female student stood up and said that someone wanted to buy her. When my son asked why someone wanted to buy her, he was pulled out of the classroom and given ISS. On the 18th, he was forced to sign a no-contact order, restraining order, without my knowledge or consent. On the 1st, I called to speak with the principal, and he was unavailable after several attempts. On the 5th, I've got a phone call from the principal that my son was being illegally searched physically and...
There's your time. I encourage you to, if you have the remainder of your comments, you may contact the Board directly through the email. Ms. Cheatham?
Yes, I'm here to speak on behalf of my son also. There has been discrimination, unfairness, bullying, and favoritism in his school, and I'm here on his behalf. I want to be heard, and I want to put a stop to those actions. And in the result of this, I had to pull my son out of school due to an incident that happened this past Friday. And I don't feel safe with my son in school at this point, so I did pull him out. Right now, he's not getting an education, and I'm very unhappy with that. And I just want to be heard and work together with the CMS and community to make it better for him to get an education.
Thank you, Ms. Cheatham. I encourage you to please contact the Board with additional information. Next is Roxana DeShong-Mirey, followed by Bill Fountain.
Let me begin.
Good evening. My name is Roxana DeShong-Mirey. As a member of Public Schools Strong, we appreciate the hard work that both the teachers and the community board do every day to ensure students get a chance at a better future. As it relates to the state and the federal cuts, they have been gradual, but their impact no less significant. The impact to Charlotte's Title I schools includes the elimination of programs like pre-K and after-school support. The effects of these cuts would be devastating and delay a child's ability to learn and develop. When it comes to funding, this money assists in better outcomes in the area of after-school support in terms of pre-K, and the funding allows for a smoother transition to a child's academic development and helps with both reading and math scores later down the road. These schools serve a high percentage of economically disadvantaged students, which rely on these funds for a significant portion of their budget, particularly for educator salaries, professional development, and instructional materials. There are new cuts coming next school year from the big, beautiful bill, as well as state failure to pass a budget, let alone the budget that fully funds the public schools. Mecklenburg schools and families need to know what will be the impact of federal and state budget cuts for our children now, not later. What is the plan to protect our children in Charlotte? In the end, as it relates to state funding, it hasn't kept pace with the students' needs, forcing districts to cut back. The Leandro Plan shows how to provide a required educational standard by ensuring adequate funding. All students should be allowed to access a sound and basic education. For the future of our country depends on every single child, not a selected one. Thank you.
Mr. Fountain, followed by Billy Hopkins.
Oh, good evening, fellow citizens. I'm Bill Fountain. Per the North Carolina DPI 2025 report, 54% of the CMS third graders are not proficient in reading. So it's time to think about the Mississippi miracle. When Mississippi required third graders to demonstrate reading proficiency before advancing to the fourth grade, teachers' social associations predicted failure. Why? They said, "Well, we've got social promotions help students maintain self-esteem with their peers." However, by setting a clear standing and pairing it with teacher training, literacy, coaches, and early intervention, Mississippi reading scores soared from 49th to 9th in the nation. And not only that, but the black students, fourth graders, they ranked 3rd in the nation, and the Hispanic ended up being 1st in the nation in reading in the fourth grade. There's nothing miraculous about a school district adopting phonics and setting high standards for kids and getting better results in reading. Remember, reading equals freedom. Illiteracy is a policy choice. All it takes is for CMS to muster the political will and effort to hold their schools accountable for results and adopt teaching practices that work. Mississippi proved that raising expectations don't punish, they empower. That's the kind of leadership and courage that we need at CMS. And thank you, and welcome to the new Board members. Charlotte, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Billy Hopkins, Jr., Director of Education for the award-winning Beta-Rho Sigma chapter, also known as the Sigma's of Charlotte of the Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated. I'm grateful to also serve as one of the advisors for our award-winning youth affiliate, the Sigma Beta Club, with a clear mission of empowering young males to succeed in life. Our education committee's motto is empowering education through scholarship, mentorship, and community involvement. We're here tonight as a means of support for our brother, District 3 Board Member Gregory D. Rankin, this entire CMS Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Hill, and all scholars, teachers, and staff members in the 186 CMS schools throughout Mecklenburg County. As the nation's 16th-largest school district, we say thank you for providing academic instruction, rigor, and support each school day for more than 144,000 scholars in kindergarten through 12th grade in environments that enhance the development of independent learners. Thank you for the significant and historic progress in the 2024-2025 test scores. Thank you to each newly-installed Board Member and re-elected Board Members for understanding and embracing the importance of going to the community, accepting our invitation, and participating in our nonpartisan Every Vote Matters CMS Board Candidate Forum in October. Continue to strive and achieve each day as you encourage, challenge, and motivate all CMS scholars to succeed with skills enabling them to compete in a global economy with upward mobility. Endless possibilities do start with CMS. We stand with you as a positive means of engagement to actively support our schools. We speak and proclaim yearly success over CMS as you continue to lead the community in educational excellence, inspiring intellectual curiosity, creativity, and achievement, so that all scholars, all scholars, reach their full potential. Thank you.
Next is Helen Wood, followed by Dr. Sheree Smith.
Good evening. My name is Helen Wood. I'm a member of Public Schools Strong, and I live in District 6. I'm delighted to be Anna London as our new rep. And I live near Ballantyne Elementary School. When I heard that the border control had come to Charlotte in November, I did not think they would come to our Ballantyne neighborhood. I wondered what my neighbors were thinking and what they would choose to do on Monday. I knew that absenteeism has been a problem everywhere in CMS. It made me angry that our families would have a new reason to consider holding children out of school and now out of fear of sending them. So I put on a safety vest and a whistle and got the name of an immigrant support organization and went and stood at my nearby school before morning bell. First, I want you to know that every family walking by seemed to know what I was doing there, though I carried no sign. Obviously, I'm not their regular crossing guard. Everybody knows her. Families had been aware of the action of the Border Patrol over the preceding weekend, and at least some of them would have asked what I was doing there. One parent spoke quietly to me as she walked by, saying, "Thank you for standing here to support our community," never slowing her pace and moving on. That day, the car line was short. All week, the car line was short, and the usual throngs of walkers were much more scarce. The day after Border Patrol left, a bright-eyed six-year-old approached me holding out a chocolate bar. I took it, and he turned and ran up the block where he saw his mother. She quickly smiled at me and waved and walked towards home. So I'm telling you this experience because, having thought about it, I would recommend that CMS continue positive communication with all families regarding immigration, immigrant issues. Consider ways to measure reasons for absenteeism.
That's your time. You can email us the rest of your comments.
Just one more. Thank you. And thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, this time I rise to introduce myself. I am Dr. Sheree Smith, a former educator, a teacher, a school counselor, a principal, an advocate of clinical addiction specialists right here over at the Mecklenburg County Detention Center for a short, brief moment. I was also a tenant of Charlotte School of Law before it got closed down due to the financial aid issues. And I rise as a U.S. Congress candidate for District 12. And I specifically rise for fresh leadership. Even though we are not speaking about it because of our political stance, 48% of our population has rent insufficiencies, making it very difficult for our community to afford school, after-school, making it very difficult for them to afford childcare. And so I rise because now we have even been backed into a corner when it comes to our federal funding. Now that that Department of Education has been eliminated on March 20th, and not only that, those programs that were usually funded are not even funded anymore, and we still need them. So I rise to ask your time to research who I am, but most importantly, ask that you would get behind me as I get behind you as your colleague in education, so that we can move Mecklenburg forward. Our motto is Mecklenburg leads. We are the leader, number four in the world when it comes to banking industries. We are getting together our voice so that we can determine our future, but it will take our fight. Dr. Sheree Smith, thank you.
That concludes our public comments for this evening. I turn to Dr. Hill for the voluntary separations and promotions through December 9th, 2025 report.
As presented.
I turn to Dr. Hill for the financial report for October 2025.
As presented.
I turn to Dr. Hill for the Contracts and Change Orders Report for October 2025.
As presented.
I turn to Dr. Hill for the Budget Amendments for October 2025 report.
As presented.
I turn to Dr. Hill for the Financial Statement Audit for Fiscal Year 25.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we will ask our auditor to come forward to provide the report for fiscal year 25.
Thank you, Board members. My name is Chad Cook. I'm an Audit Director with Forests Mazars out of our Greensboro, North Carolina office. Before I get started, I just want to say thank you. Before I get started, just want to say thank you to Chief Klutz and the whole finance staff. The audit process each year, it's huge. There's thousands of requests, and they did a great job in just keeping up with us and helping us get to this point tonight. I've got a presentation that's not clicking forward. You know, I've got the printed out report, so let me just jump into it. As a reminder, our audit over the financial statements is for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2025. Really, we have three audits going on. It's an audit of the financial statements like I just mentioned, but in addition, we're also required, because of the level of state and federal funding that you all receive, we also perform a compliance audit in accordance with the Uniform Guidance, and then also a compliance audit in accordance with the Audit Manual for Governmental Auditors in North Carolina. In terms of the status of the audit, the financial statement audit has been completed. That has been submitted to the North Carolina Local Government Commission and is subject to their review. We've audited, again, the financial statements as of and for the year ended June 30, 2025, and we've issued an unmodified or clean opinion thereon. We do have one emphasis of matter within our report this year, and this, it just relates to the adoption of a new accounting standard. So there was a change that the GASB made to the way that compensated absences are recorded, which required some adjustment within the financial statements this year. Again, no changes to policies themselves, it's just a new standard that was adopted. And really, the only impact was that now there's a liability on the books for sick leave, whereas in the past, we just had accrued vacation time. There's now an also, excuse me, there's also an estimate for accrued sick leave time that is now recognized as a liability. So a little change just in terms of comparability if you were looking at the financial statements from 2025 versus 2024. As it pertains to the compliance audits, there's actually been some updates since the time that I've submitted this, this presentation for the meeting. We've performed the federal compliance audit in accordance with the Uniform Guidance, and then also the state compliance audit in accordance with the Audit Manual for Governmental Auditors in North Carolina. However, we could not previously issue the compliance audit because, due to the federal government shutdown, the OMB had not released the compliance supplements, which is what the audit is based on for the federal compliance audit. That has now been released, and so we're in the process of pulling in the compliance supplement, making sure there have been no changes, which we don't believe there have been to the prior year version, and then completing that audit with the goal of submitting that before Christmas. And, sorry, just to back up, at this time, in case I skipped over this, we do anticipate issuing unmodified or clean audit opinions related to those compliance programs as well. Internal controls communication. Should we identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls as it relates to financial reporting? We would be required to report those. Happy to report that we did not discover any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls over financial reporting. Additionally, if we discovered any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls over compliance with your federal or state grant programs, we'd also be required to report those. And again, we have not finalized those audits yet because, because of the delay in the OMB compliance supplement release, but at this point in time, we have not identified any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, so intend to issue a clean or unmodified opinion there as well. Other required communications, I won't go through all of these, but just know that, you know, if we came across any unusual policies or methods, or we had difficulties in our audit process, or we had to consult with other accountants for matters that maybe we had disagreements with management as it relates to financial reporting, we would be required to report those. A lot of language here that just says, we do not have any matters to report in those Additionally, management judgments and accounting estimates, we do like to point out that there are some significant estimates included within the financial statements, and if assumptions that go into those estimates are not correct, there could be material swings within the financial results. The ones that we like to point out, number one, the allowance for uncollectible receivables. Second, compensated absences, there's a lot of assumptions that go into the compensated absences calculation now with the implementation of GASB 101 that we discussed earlier, especially sick leave. The impairment of any long-lived assets, pension and OPEB-related liabilities, as well as the related deferred inflows and outflows in the financial statements. And then lastly, incurred but not reported claim liabilities as it relates to the insurance fund. So there are estimates that go into those. We certainly review management's estimates, make sure that they're reasonable, and that the data that's going into those estimates is reliable, but do like to point out that those are some significant estimates within the financial statements. That really concludes the report. We did previously present to the FFNO Committee back on November 20th, and so this is sort of a truncated version of that report, but certainly happy to answer any questions anyone may have at this point.
Thank you so much for the report. Board members, we will follow our normal cadence. You have up to one minute for your question, and if you have a follow-up, a 30-second follow-up as well. Are there any questions? I do have one question. I just want to be sure, you indicated that there was delayed release of information from OMB in two sectors, two segments, but do you anticipate if there could be any possible negative reflection in our reporting, even though you're just receiving that information?
Yeah, so what we did, we had already identified the major programs. That process has not changed. And what we did is we tested them using the prior year compliance supplement, and so we went through it and said, all right, let's just assume no changes are going to occur, and then we'll have to evaluate that. We're going through those now to make sure that's the case, but all indication from our national office is that there were no significant changes within Department of Education programs. So we don't expect that any of those procedures will change, and if they don't change, we have no more tests to perform. We should not have any findings related to that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, board members? All right, thank you so much for the report. All right, I turn to Dr. Hill for Student Outcomes Focus Governance Goal One, Interim Measure 1.1 report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we are honored to welcome Principal Michael Lungarini.
Dr. Hill.
I'm sorry. As presented.
Thank you. I turn to Dr. Hill for the Student Outcomes Focus Governance Goal One, Interim Measure 1.1 report.
I was really excited. Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we are honored to welcome Principal Michael Lungarini and Multi-Classroom Leader Mary Farrell from Statesville Road Elementary School. Principal Lungarini brings 21 years of experience in education, while Ms. Farrell has dedicated 10 years to supporting student success. Together, they exemplify strong leadership and a deep commitment to early literacy. As we focus on Student Outcomes Focus Governance for Goal One, Interim Measure One, supporting kindergarten literacy, they will share insights into the strategies and progress-driven improvement outcomes for our youngest learners. Thank you so much for being here, Principal Lungarini and Ms. Farrell.
Good evening, board members. Congratulations to our new board members, district leaders, community members. I'm the proud principal of Statesville Road Elementary School, and the growth you're about to hear is centered around the dedicated work of our staff. We've done a lot of great work at Statesville Road. Year after year, we've exceeded expectations. We've raised our letter grade, two letter grades in the last three years. So it's just a proud moment here to be up here, to be representing Statesville Road and putting us on the map. We have done a lot of work around strengthening our PLCs through navigating and modeling resources, coaching from our MCLs and outstanding veteran teachers. We have also worked on building the capacity of our families in the work that they do at home with their children. Most importantly, we celebrate the students along the way, and we try to grow them by building their intrinsic motivation as they are truly excited to learn. We are proud of the work that we are doing to support literacy. At this time, I will introduce our Multi-Classroom Leader, Ms. Mary Farrell, as she details the instructional practices that we have put in place for early literacy.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As Dr. Hill and Mr. Lungarini noted, my name is Mary Farrell, and I am a K-2 Multi-Classroom Leader at Statesville Road Elementary. I am proud to share some of the instructional practices that have supported strong progress towards our district's Goal One. In the 2024-2025 school year, our kindergarteners grew from 36% at the beginning of year to 54% in January, and finally to 78% on the end-of-year DIBELS assessment. For our kindergarten students, strong early literacy instruction is essential. Phonological awareness, decoding, fluency, and comprehension are the skills needed to create the foundation that all future reading success depends on. To support this, our approach is explicit, structured, and grounded in data. One of our strongest practices is systematic phonics instruction. Every day, our students engage in consistent routines focused on letter-sound relationships, blending, segmenting, and decoding. They receive immediate feedback and multiple opportunities to practice because we know that mastery at this stage is critical. We also rely heavily on small differentiated groups guided by DIBELS progress monitoring. Students work on the exact skills they need, whether that's isolating beginning sounds, blending phonemes, or reading CVC words. Groups shift frequently based on real-time data, so instruction is always responsive and targeted. Another powerful piece of our success is our daily phonological awareness instruction using Hegarty. In just 10 minutes a day, students strengthen their ability to hear and manipulate sounds without print. This work may sound simple, but it is one of the strongest predictors of future reading success, and it has been a game changer for our students. Finally, a best practice we've implemented at Statesville Road has been reviewing our progress monitoring data weekly with our teachers, enabling them to own their data. Teachers each have their own data tracker to easily identify who needs to be progress monitored, what small groups share common support areas, and to set goals with their students. It empowers teachers and students to improve. Because of the dedication of our staff, families, and students, we're seeing real growth in early literacy, and our kindergarteners are pretty proud of themselves, as they should be. Thank you for supporting this work and believing in our youngest learners.
Thank you so much for being here. Madam Chair, members of the board, we often talk about the importance of the board's goals being seen all the way to the classroom, so we're just so glad that we had our leaders here today to share, so thank you so much. The monitoring report this evening is focused on Goal One, Interim Measure 1.1. We begin our 2025-26 reporting with the first of five updates on Goal One, Early Literacy. The five-year goal is to increase the percent of K-2 students scoring at or above benchmark in early literacy as measured by DIBELS from 67% in June 2023 to 91% by June 2029. Tonight's report focuses on beginning-of-year data. This tells us exactly where our kindergarten through second-grade students are starting the year, and it gives us the baseline we need to measure our progress and shows us where we need to focus our instruction and resources over the next nine months. We will start by looking at overall goal performance. The annual target for Goal One for the 25-26 school year is 79% of K-2 students to be at or above benchmark by the end of the year on the DIBELS assessment. Our beginning-of-year percentages of students at or above benchmark is 54%, which means that we need to increase the percentage of students at or above benchmark by 25% by the end of the school year. When we compare the beginning-of-year performance of students in grades K-2 over the last four years, it's important to note that 54% of our K-2 students at or above grade, excuse me, benchmark is the highest beginning-of-year percentage our students at or above benchmark since we started using the DIBELS assessment in the 22-23 school year. This indicates that our students are starting the year stronger than ever before, and the trend of annual increases in K-2 beginning-of-year performance is encouraging, demonstrating that the strategies that we've put in place are having a tangible cumulative effect on early literacy achievement. At the end of last school year, 72% of our K-2 students were at or above benchmark, and this year, the target is 79%. We're starting the year with 54% of our students at or above benchmark, which means we need to increase by 25%. Last year, our K-2 students increased 20% between the beginning-of-year assessment and the end-of-year assessment. If we performed at the same rate this school year with a beginning-of-year percentage of 54%, we would project that 74% of our students would be at or above benchmark. That means that we need to accelerate our rate of improvement by 5% to achieve this year's target. This is a strategic challenge ahead and guides our instructional focus. 29,223 K-2 students were assessed in grades K-2 at the beginning of this year. To achieve this year's 79% target, we need a total of 23,087 students to finish the year at or above benchmark. As of our beginning-of-year assessment, we had 15,680 students already reached this level, which means that we need an additional 7,407 students to meet the target. We will now focus on what the focus is of this report, which is specifically kindergarten achievement. The annual target for the performance of kindergarten students for the 25-26 school year is 85% of our students to be at or above benchmark. At our beginning-of-year assessment, that percentage was 44%, which means we need to increase by 41% by the end of the school year. Consistent with the overall K-2 trend, our kindergarten beginning-of-year percentage is very encouraging, 44%. When we take a look at the beginning-of-year performance of students in kindergarten over the last four years, you can see that the percentage of kindergarten students at the start of the year is relatively consistent over the last three years. At the end of last school year, 77% of our kindergarten students were at or above benchmark. This year, the target is 85%. And last year, it's important to note that we increased 34% between the beginning-of-the-year assessment and the end-of-year assessment. We need to accelerate our rate of improvement by 7% to achieve this year's target. Here you see the number of students that we need to meet our goal. You will see that we need an additional 3,792 students to reach our target. Beyond the overall proficiency rate for kindergarten students, we're looking at our kindergarten students' performance on specific DIBELS subtests, and this guides our strategic action for the school year. And Madam Chair, at this point, I will turn it over to you to facilitate questions.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hill. Board members, we'll follow our normal cadence, which is we're looking backwards, which means how do we get to this point in terms of performance to this date and in the reporting date? And I will entertain any questions. The first question is, board membership.
Yes, yes. As I look on page 11, and you talked about the increase, it was at 44%, slightly higher than before, but we still missed that goal slightly, about 3% last year. We're now at 44%. How do you see us meeting the projected goal of 85% by the end of the year, realizing this is the first quarter goal? What do we need to do here?
Yes, so looking back at our monitoring last year, we learned a lot. One of the things that we learned is the importance of progress monitoring and monitoring beyond just the lowest-enabling skill, which for kindergarten is letter naming fluency. And so what we know is if we focus on the skill that students will need to be at or above benchmark at the middle of the year, and not only focus on the lowest-enabling skill, but also take a look at that next step, that we will see promising results. We have started that work, and as of right now, since our most recent progress monitoring cycle, which was actually December 5, we now have projecting about 71% of our students to be at or above benchmark at middle of the year.
A follow-up question, and you mentioned it about progress monitoring and how critical that is. What does that look like now? I know in November, there was training. Where are our teachers at, and what kind of support are they going to get? Because it's hard when they're feeling like they don't have the time and the support to get that progress monitoring done. Talk to me a little bit about that.
Absolutely. So if you'll take a look at your monitors, you will see that we are really excited about a new data dashboard that the team has done an incredible job creating. This dashboard allows us to see exactly where students are and as well as how they're doing in the progress monitoring. And as you, as you heard Ms. Farrell speak about the weekly coaching with, with teachers to make sure that they not only are conducting the progress monitoring, but understand the data that they're getting from the progress monitoring, and then in turn, using that information to guide their daily instruction.
Thank you so much. I'll stop there.
Dr. Whitstone?
It's sort of a hybrid question. It's a hybrid question. What strategic adjustments, looking back over the historic, historical beginning of the year, for the past four years, what, what strategic adjustments helped get to 54%? What do you think is going to help move us forward to get us to our goal?
Yes, so I would say there's a couple of things, and if we can go to slide 14, I think that would be helpful, specifically talking about our theory of change. So one of So one of the strategic moves that we've made this year is actually putting into place this theory of change. We talked about it last year and have lots of learning, but we're actually able to put this framework together, and we're actually seeing it translate into big gains for our students already. Specifically, I want to speak to the work that we're doing with the cycles of improvement with our high-quality specialists, as well as our master teachers, which includes multi-classroom teachers, such as Ms. Farrell, as well as, excuse me, so those two groups. So we are doing continuous improvement cycles where they are actually going through professional development. They're responding to questions in terms of their ability to obtain the knowledge and not only just take that information, but use it to actually coach the teachers in real time. And so that has been a huge strategic move. The other strategic move that we have done in terms of high-quality instruction is we've actually taken a look at the pacing that we had last year, specifically for whole-group instruction, and we've actually accelerated that pacing to make sure that students have access to that instruction early in the year. So specifically, our curriculum has built-in flex days. And so what we've done is we pulled those flex days out from each quarter, 1, 2, and 3, and it actually pushed them till the end of the year, which would ensure that we have more days for instruction. So that, combined with the accelerated pacing, we believe is going to propel us to move forward, along with what I already said with the progress monitoring.
Thank you.
Board Member Hatch?
Yes. So it was great to hear that Statesville Road, where I went, is beating the targets. And so I'm curious about the schools that have literacy rates below 40%, if they have the resources to replicate those learnings. And if not, what can we do to support you in rapidly removing those barriers?
Thank you. Great question. One of the things that I am very proud of in terms of a strategic move is the work that our school performance area assistant superintendents have done. And they are all in the room here today, so I'm really proud that they are here. One of the things that, so previously, our learning community superintendents were the entire grade span, K through 12, pre-K through 12. Now they're focused specifically on a grade-level area. And those assistant superintendents not only work with their portfolio of schools, but they are like this. And so over the last week, I've had an opportunity just to meet with them and talk with them specifically about the work that they're doing. And it is incredible to hear them talk about the strategies, the things that they're doing that are making real change in every single building, regardless of the students that they serve. So I think that's one of the big pieces that's happened. The other thing that I would say is the support also, along with our learning and teaching division, making sure that those resources are not only available, but they're actually being used. And not only just being used, but actually the evidence through the core action walks. So the teams go through, they take a look to see, not only is there high-quality instruction, but the high-quality instructional materials are being used in every single classroom, and then looking at the actual task that the students are doing in the classroom to make sure that we're pushing every single student to meet their maximum potential.
Chair Rankin?
Looking at slide 14, under, we'll call it the brick, the theory of change brick, high-quality core instruction. The second bullet point there is talking about continuing to monitor instruction to ensure our students receive differentiated instruction. Can you talk through or discuss, what evidence do we have that this strategy is actually working towards where we need to be?
Yeah, absolutely. So I will speak specifically to, well, can I talk to you about the what? And then answer a question about how the evidence that we know that it's working?
Yes.
Okay. So if we can take a look at, from Beth is the slide that I need to go to. Yes, thank you very much. That is slide 29. And so what I'd like to point out here is this is a specific resource that, again, the team has developed. This is our ROI tool, Rate of Improvement Document. We've shared it with our schools. We've trained our schools on this support tool. But what this is, is it helps our teachers and our staff know where a student would need to be within a specific sub-measure. So I talked about those different sub-measures, letter-naming fluency, nonsense word fluency. So to know exactly where they should be by a certain date to be progressing that rate would put them at or above benchmark. So for every single student, we're able to use this rate of improvement tool. That paired with that data tool that I talked about is really showing us how students are progressing. So the data that we have, you heard Ms. Farrell talk about, they're monitoring that every single week. Not only are they monitoring, but they're also reporting that out. So that's how we're able to know that as of 12:05, based on our progress monitoring, that we are, we've already moved 2,556 students towards being at or above benchmark. And we know that's working because previously, while we were progress monitoring, we were only progress monitoring the lowest-enabling skill. So we know that this is working because we know in real time how students are moving based on the rate of improvement.
So I think this ROI, which is great, tool talks about, you know, how we know that the students are, we can track how the students are moving. But when I see the continuing, so when it says continuing monitoring, I thought it was referring to the instruction itself, right? So it was referring to how do we know that the strategy around monitoring the instruction is working?
Yes, that's, yes.
So I'm trying to figure, I'm trying to connect the two, what you just said.
Absolutely. So that would be the core action walk.
Yes.
Yes. So the teams go into the classroom to actually take a look at what instructional practices are being, are happening in the classroom, as well as if that task is matched to what that student needs to be able to progress forward.
Got you.
So in all of the data tracking, when they meet in their PLCs, they know these group of students need to work on these specific skills. And then when they do their core action walk or any walk that the principal and the instructional team, the MCLs, the master teachers are going to the classroom, they're taking a look and saying, we said this group of students needed this treatment during the day. So during the next week, we're going to go in and monitor these instructional practices being used. And then there are progress monitoring to collect the data to see if the treatment is actually working for the students.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. It looks like we're able to transition to forward-looking questions. Chair Rankin?
Thank you. First of all, we were only, what, 3% away, I think, 2%, maybe? We did a phenomenal job on this goal. Knowing what we know now, do we have evidence that indicates that the strategies that are in place now, that the strategies that are in place will be robust enough to recover the 3% and also achieve our target of 83% for this year?
Yes. And we know that specifically based on research. So let's see if I can find. So a couple of things, if we can go to, yep, thank you, slide 45. So one of the things that we know is, based on research, which Amplify did a national 2025 research based on DIBELS performance. And again, DIBELS is not something that's germane just to Charlotte-Maconburg schools. It's required by the state of North Carolina, and it's a nationally, it's a national assessment that is nationally normed. So Mr. Fountain talked a little bit about what happened in Mississippi. Mississippi uses the DIBELS assessment. But what we do know based on data is that 92% of students who started third grade last year on track in reading finished the year performing on grade level. And then 87% of students who started kindergarten on track in the 21-22 school year were still on grade level at the end of third grade. So on the next slide, what you will see is how important it is to intervene early. So the thing that I love about the goals that the board has set is they are all interconnected. Our Goal One leads naturally into Goal Two. But what you will see here is that when you have kindergarten students that are at risk for not learning to read, they're less likely to be on track if we don't catch them early, which is why we know not only is just kindergarten critically important, but us accelerating achievement for our students from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year is extremely important. The other piece of research that I just want to point to is about the listening comprehension. You all have heard me talk a little bit about that. So if we can go to that slide, thank you, Beth. So on the listening comprehension, you've heard me talk a little bit about research that Dr. Monroe Richardson shared from Reed Charlotte in terms of reading frameworks. And then one of the missing pieces was oral reading fluency. It wasn't something that we were paying a lot of attention to. In addition to that, we also know that, from the MEBEN early literacy research that they have, that we know that oral reading fluency is critically important. There's data and evidence to show that. So this is a piece that we have inserted into our curriculum this year. We're really excited about this. Students have the opportunity to listen to a piece of literature of their choice, and after they listen to it, they have to comprehend it and respond based on their specific area of microphase. So students are practicing the listening, and then based on where they are, they can either respond by telling what happened in the book. They can respond by drawing, and then they can even respond by writing a sentence, which of course is the most advanced form of literacy. So those are the things that we've put in place that we feel very confident about because we are using research and evidence practices into our curriculum and instructional practices. That's new this year that wasn't in place last year.
Thank you.
So Dr. Hill, earlier I talked about the students that are below 40%. And so I'm curious about what evidence do we have that the strategies that have been discussed will reach those students and help accelerate their outcomes instead of just being evenly distributed?
Yes, absolutely. So if we can flip to slide 41, and then we'll go to 42. So the evidence of how we know is the data dashboards that I talked about. But for you to have an idea of exactly what is happening in the classroom is we have ensured that there are additional opportunities for teachers to model and for students to apply blending words together to get to that nonsense word fluency. So one of the things that we know about students is it doesn't matter where they start. We still have to provide opportunities for them to be where they need to be to meet benchmark at the middle of the year, or we'll never get to where we need to be. And so said differently, we are making sure that even though students may not be developmentally ready to do these things on their own, we've embedded it into whole-group instruction. So students are seeing the teacher model the practices that they'll be expected to do, and then scaffolding that support so they are eventually able to do it on their own. So here's just a few examples and an explanation of exactly what that looks like. Like I said, it has been embedded into lessons to begin reading simple three-letter words. And then on the next slide, you will see, this is very small writing, but the students go to three daily station rotations, and the students are participate, expected to participate in a station that offers targeted practice on early literacy skills aligned to their specific area of need. So we're meeting them where they are. So the data dashboard, plus the progress monitoring, plus the core action walks ensures that every single student is getting what they need and that they are progressing forward.
Thank you.
Board Member Hill?
Yes. Looking forward, as we think about student engagement, and I think one of the ones I looked at the most was about attendance barriers. What does that look like now in terms of engaging and coaching and having the social workers we need at the schools to really work with some of this chronic absenteeism at some schools?
Yes. So I think it was two years ago, we revamped our model for social workers to make sure that every school had access to a social worker. We've also done deep work in terms of our standard protocols, in terms of prevention of absenteeism, and then also response when students begin to be absent. One of the critical things that we have done is to make sure that if we, if students have a history of being chronically absent, not waiting until the current year, till they start racking up those absences, but intervening early. One of the things that, in a most recent SOFG training, that was an aha moment for me as it relates to our theory of action in terms of student engagement is how much of this strategy is influenceable by staff? So for engagement, we have focused heavily on attendance. But if you really think about it, we can do things to help prevent students from being absent. We can intervene when students are absent. But the reality is, we do not have 80% influence over whether or not students come to school. There's lots of, not saying that it's not important, not saying that we won't continue to monitor it, but we will be thinking deeply about other strategies that we need to embed in our theory of change that will be a better predictor of getting us to the goal that we need to get to because coming to school is just a basic expectation. Those are things that we should be doing already, not something necessarily that's a part of our theory of action. So we'll be thinking, looking forward about things that we, strategies that we can really focus on, that really speak more to how we engage students while they're with us during the day.
And that would have been my follow-up, what you just said, is what are we doing in the classroom to really engage them so they want to come to school?
Yes.
Every day, because sometimes that's a problem too. They're not engaged in their particular, you know, literacy, especially reading is difficult.
Right. And I think an important point to note as well, too, is attendance doesn't equal engagement.
That's right.
People can show up every single day and even appear to be engaged, but aren't truly authentically engaged. So just knowing that there are other strategies that we already have in place, but something that we need to lift in terms of being a critical factor to meet the board's goals.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitson?
Just one more, along the lines of, one aspect, the family engagement. When you, how effective are the strategies of, just kind of looking on page 39, I think it's, and in the, actually, it's in the appendix, but just looking through some of those, you know, things such as getting family surveys and things like that, how effective are the strategies of getting folks, families, to respond?
Yes. So. Sorry, it's way back here. Here we are. Okay. So one of the things that we have been focusing on is making sure that parents and guardians have access to the reports in terms of the benchmark reports that they get. I do want to note that that is not anything special that we do here in CMS. It is a state requirement that we make sure that they get those out. We have, though, used our different communication modalities to make sure that parents are receiving them via ParentSquare, and we're able to track that. And that's one of the things that we're tracking in terms of making sure that parents actually get it and open it. The other thing that we're taking a look at is surveys. We have just administered that survey, but you will see on this page that, that parents are indicating their ease of using the results. And then we're also tracking, I've mentioned before, the different videos and resources that we have available that parents are able to see, if your child is here... If your child is here, these are the things that you can do with your students here. And so that has been very effective. The other thing that I will add, that I'm not sure if it's listed here, but one of the things that the engagement team has done based on our learning is that sending the information out or making webinars available may not be the best way to engage, but really taking a look at who's taking advantage of those. And if they're not, then how can we take those resources actually to them? And so I cannot call the name of the two schools. I'm looking for Steve Esposito. He provided it to me this past week in his weekly report that there were two schools, can't remember the name, but they had over four hundred families participate between those two schools in the most recent family engagement. And that, of course, is directly aligned to the board's goals. There's lots of things that we can engage families around, which we do, but the team has been very intentional in making sure that we're engaging families, not only around the board's goals, but also the protections that I should not forsake in terms of the board's guardrails. So that's one of the things that we've noticed, is that everybody isn't taking advantage of just this one modality. How can we actually go into the schools and provide the school teams with that same level of support?
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. I believe that concludes the question, and thank you, board members. I turn to Dr. Hill for superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening. I'd like to begin by congratulating all of our new board members who were elected and re-elected this past last month. To our new board members, welcome. I look forward to working with you to provide Charlotte Mecklenburg School students with endless possibilities. I also want to say a very special congratulations to Board Chair Sneed and Board Vice Chair Rankin on their reelection to the board and their leadership roles. Your continued commitment and vision are invaluable to ensuring the success of every student and advancing our mission. Thank you for your dedication, and I'm eager to continue working closely together with you. For our academics pillar, we're happy to announce that our pre-K application process for the next school year, can you guys believe it, already is open. To apply, children must be four years old on or before August thirty-first, 2026. You can visit our district website at www.cmsk12.org to learn more and to apply. So from news about our youngest students to exciting news about our high school students' participation and performance in advanced placement courses. A record eleven thousand two hundred eighty-nine CMS students took twenty-one thousand seven hundred ninety-nine AP, which is advanced placement exams, last year, which is the highest in district's history. Since 2021, more CMS students have been enrolling in AP courses and achieving success on exams, with seventy-five percent of test takers earning qualifying scores of three or higher in 2025, which is a district record that reflects the growing academic strength of Charlotte Mecklenburg School students. These record results have a meaningful financial impact. Our students earned an estimated forty-eight thousand potential college credits, which translates to approximately fourteen point three million dollars in potential tuition savings for our students and their families. So congratulations to our students. I'd like to say a very special congratulations to Dr. Kimberly Vaught, who is our Assistant Superintendent for the K-8 School Performance Area. She has been selected as one of eleven senior level educator administrators in the country to participate in the Council of Grade City Schools Michael Casserly Urban Executive Leadership Institute for Superintendents. This program is designed to help current and aspiring superintendents to develop the skills they need to successfully lead a large urban school system. Congratulations. I'd also like to say congratulations to Dora Shivers, who is the Director of Grant Innovation and Management. She's been recently named President of Grant Professionals Association. I always like to say, things don't happen, people make them happen. We have over eighteen thousand employees that are critical to the work that we do every single day, and we are at a pivotal point, which is midway through year two of the board's 2024-29 goals. The data shows that we're on track to meet these Herculean goals. When the board adopted these goals, we went into the community and asked the question, what will it take for us to be successful? Every single stakeholder group agreed: recruit and retain the very best people. We asked how. They simply said, pay them, train them, and you will retain them. In the past three years, we've invested over twenty-three point four six million dollars in local teacher and certified staff supplements and thirty-four point one million dollars for classified staff. And we're not done. December officially marks budget season, and we will begin engaging the community about priorities to inform my budget recommendation to the Board of Education. We are committed to ensuring we continue to pay, train, and retain the best, because things don't just happen, people make them happen. We will continue investing in our people. For operations, construction on the Northwest School of the Arts Building G is almost complete. New furniture has been installed, and students and staff are excited to move in next month. The new space features lots of natural light and bright colors, and if you haven't had a chance to go visit, please do, it is beautiful. This project is a part of the 2023 bond. For engagement, we are celebrating three years of the Meaningful Medicine Program here in Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools. Meaningful Medicine is an innovative partnership with Atrium Health, funded through a grant from Bank of America, to bring health access and mental wellness resources to CMS. This initiative has also provides our high school students with career pathway programs in the healthcare field. This is an incredible program, making an impact. The school-based virtual care service is offered in one hundred fifteen CMS locations, and it's available to students and staff when they are not feeling well on campus during school hours. There are thirty-two locations that offer Atrium Health's school-based virtual therapy on campus during school hours, and this program has helped nearly a thousand students with their emotional wellness needs during the school day. As a part of the Career Pathway Program, nearly three hundred of our high school students have participated in Atrium Health's workforce development programs. In closing, I'd like to thank our student advisor, Lucy Silverstein, for her service to the board this year. Thank you so much for your contributions and perspectives, and I also enjoy having you on the Superintendent Student Advisory Board. We wish you all the best as you finish up your senior year, and we can't wait to see you in your play. Congratulations. This concludes my report.
Board members, do you have a report? No. All right. The next action item is, no, seriously. No, okay. The final item for this evening is the recommended approval of the 2026 Board of Education meeting calendar. I turn to Board Member Dr. Monty Witherspoon for this motion.
That's me. All right. Madam Chair, I move to approve the meeting calendar for the 2026 regular meetings of the Board of Education as presented. Once approved, this will set the dates for the twenty-one regular meetings of the Board of Education as outlined in Board by Law B-B-E-A, Board of Education Meetings.
Is there a second?
A second.
The motion has been properly seconded by Board Member Haynes. Is there any discussion? Dr. Witherspoon, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would not.
Is there any other discussion? With that being said, we're ready for, by show of hands, all those approval... All those that approve the 2026 Board of Education meeting calendar by show of hands. All right. Motion carries, and our meeting is adjourned.